Maybe here. Um, we have the, the standards. And so we need to um make a proposal.
As far as. Do now a variance for an eight foot privacy fence enclosed in the portion of the rear yard or three houses off in street. Where the maximum permitted height is six feet, so it's going to be two.
Okay.
Support.
Support, okay. I think this we have to have the roll call. Is that correct Cindy?
We don't have to, but we can.
That'll change. Will we do votes? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is paid.
Yes.
And you will definitely go.
Yes.
So, lives if you heard that, that gives you an answer to your neighbors' requests result. Thank you. Um, let's move on to the second one. Five sixty-nine Hoffman for the side.
Yes, this is an existing house that is set back from the property line on the side. Approximately two feet in the front corner and a little bit less in the rear corner. They want to put an addition on the property in line with that existing setback. That we did get a letter from the neighbors in support of the application. They're joining neighbors where the addition will be. And that is in your packet. That's about all. I could just tell you that a similar one that you did to this was eight-ten Hoffman. And that was about a hundred and forty-eight square feet addition, and this one is closer to forty-nine square feet. Yes.
Yeah.
I just got the one letter. It's in, that's in your packet. And they are on, they are on Zoom.
They're on Zoomers, um, tell applicants, um, for five sixty-nine Hoffman, if you wish to make a presentation at this time. Uh, please state your name, name and who's on.
Well, hello, it's, it's Rob and Carrie Bondersitt. Yeah, we'll get the video up. And really, you know, our information, we have sent everything we can, you know, we just hope that, that you guys are agreeable. We're, we're pretty landlocked where we could do this. And there's, there's really no other options and we'd really like to add another bath. We just feel that as, you know, we're going to spend more time there and we're, we're going to grow older there, so we need to have that extra bathroom. With a walk-in shower would be very helpful. Carrie, do you have anything?
Yeah, it's just, it's a three-bedroom home. Um, and with our family, there's generally seven of us using one bathroom. And the way that the construction is in the back, we do have um rough-out water that we'd be able to most easily. Really, the only location to put this bath is in the back left corner of the home.
There's an existing half-bath there right now. And it's actually, it, it's seven. Cindy, I think you mentioned like fifty square feet. I think it's closer to like seventy square feet. It's like seven by
Twelve?
Twelve. So is that eighty-four square feet?
And as the note mentions from our, um, the neighbor that's just adjacent to this, there's a driveway that separates our property from their property. So there's already that natural
Separation.
separation between the residents. Is there anything else we can answer?
No, is there, um, thank you very much. And again, who am I speaking with?
This is Rob and Carrie Bondersitt. We're the owners.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um. We did, did we have any thing, any notes from just the neighbors? And that was it?
The one comment from the neighbor that's adjacent, most impacted by the addition.
Yes, okay. Now be the neighbor to the, well, I guess the west, right?
The west, sorry.
Correct. Thank you. Um. I don't think there's any negative things. So I think we can move on. Let's take a look at the uh on one fifty-four, all of the variants or the standards on that. I'll take the first one where it talks about the strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage height, bulk density, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessary burdensome? They are they are continuing something that we have done with a lot of other houses and everything else in this in this area. And so the continuation of that room, it'd be difficult to do anything different to make for that bathroom. And I, I feel that um this um would be permitted under this particular uh any other comments?
Yes, two. Based on what they've presented with the difficulties with their plumbing and their other issues, I think it would be unnecessarily burdensome to require that that bathroom be remo, be moved over and be in conformance. And we are extending the line of the house. It's in keeping with everything else. So I think since it would be unnecessarily burdensome to conform, I think we could say the standard's been met.
Been met. Yeah, that we, I didn't think of it that way, Jim, but that's brings out a good point on that side of the construction of it and everything. Where the bathroom and line would have to be.
Just continues the straight.
Continues the straight thing, yes. And being in construction myself and also in Jim, there's a lot of things when you look at a lot of that stuff that uh is, you, the small things you don't see, that could be very burdensome on that. So I feel that that would be met too.
Yeah, I thought it met standard.
Okay. Number two, Zach, you want to take that one?
That a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. Comment is the proposed addition will be located at the rear of the house. And a letter in support was received from the adjacent resident. There's a driveway between the two homes that allows for additional separation. Um, I thought that the proposal for the variance was very reasonable. Eighty-four square feet. I'm not sure how you'd make it any lesser and have it be um you know.
Usable.
Yeah, usable, yeah. I didn't think there was a lesser relaxation. That would make sense.
Well, on the other side here, he wasn't asking for a lesser relaxation either.
He's pretty much requested the minimum to meet their needs and still come as close as possible to satisfying.
Very reasonable.
Cindy, is that, can I ask a question? The garage, the neighbor's garage, is that within their setback?
The neighboring property that wrote the letter, they meet the setback because the driveway is on their property and the full width of the driveway is between the property line.
But their drive, their garage, I believe, is not, is closer to the neighbor than the driveway.
The neighbor's to the west garage you're talking about?
Garage in the back, yeah, that probably is, but that's not where the addition will be.
So it's on this side?
That's the corner where they want the addition.
With the two driveways between? I don't think so. I don't know why this photo was.
No, it's just.
I know, I don't, this photo is.
That, that photo.
Right. And their garage looks like it's very close to.
The neighbor's garage looks very close to the lot line.
And I'm just have a survey of the neighbor's property.
I'm just concerned this addition is going to be very close to the neighbor's garage.
Can we, can we make a comment on that?
Yes, please.
Oh, there's the raised hand, sorry. The neighbor's garage is set back pretty far. So there's still like probably another thirty, twenty to thirty feet.
It's at the back of their property.
It's at the back of their property line, the garage.
Right, but you're, you're getting closer to it by adding to the back.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty far back though, and, and they, they don't even continue with their garage. Their driveway just.
It's very close, and it's close this way too.
Well, to me, it seems like it's quite, it looks like it's close, but it, they're quite, that garage of their neighbors is quite a ways away.
It's not. I went by the house. I mean, it's.
Well, I walked up to it too.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. It's just.
So if he has no concern, but Kate, your concern is well looked at. Okay.
Have we agreed that standard two has been met?
Would standard two be met?
I think it is. I think so.
I think it would be. Okay, number three, Mr. Bott, would you take that one, please?
Explain how the plate of the owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general neighborhood conditions. The applicant's statement is they're following the existing structure line. The house is, would you say nineteen fifty-three, built before the zoning was in place, which is why the house is where it is today. So they're extending the property line. And they've investigated and not found other viable solutions to add this bathroom to the house anywhere else due to the existing half-bath and the location of the exterior door and the plumbing. So in this case, there are some unique circumstances that the house is old, the house is built where it was built before there was zoning in place. And the existing plumbing and back door would make it, as we said before, unnecessarily burdensome to try and move that anywhere else. So in this case, I would say that that standard has been met.
Okay. Agreed. Agreed. I would tend to agree with that also then. Kate, you want to take the last one then for me?
That the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Same reasoning as number three.
Very much so. You know, and we're confronted with a lot of that. I go back when we first started here before Cindy was even here and we've been, Jim and I have been here and Zach has been confronted. A lot of the houses in our neighborhood since everything has been so small and brought together so tight that we have a lot of these circumstances that are people that are asking for some reasonable things. I think these are the things we look at. And we try to keep our, our city in tune to those things that make it better for the constituent and better for our city. So I very much so appreciate your comments on all of these. So can we make a motion on this one then?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve in addition to five sixty-nine Hoffman's with a setback of approximately one point eight feet to the west property line for a variance of five point two feet as submitted.
Okay, I'll second. Second by Zach. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. So if you see that, Cindy will be in touch with you and let you know on the approval on that and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, one thirty-five Vandalsen Street.
Well, you can probably tell by my memo that this is one of the more complex requests that we've had. The special comments, special notes that I put in the memo. It's really the whole problem with this property is the size of the lot. It's half the size of a normal lot. And the whole subdivision was planted that way. Some have been combined into more standard lots, but quite a few of them remain at the sixty-six by sixty-six feet. The unusual thing that I found is the property was demolished and rebuilt in two thousand and two. There must have been, because I can't find anything else, there must have been a fire and they rebuilt on the same footprint. And the demolition was probably for the remainder of the fire damaged structure. I also found in the zoning ordinance that amendments were made to the non-conforming part of the ordinance right around two thousand and two as well. Maybe as a result of that, maybe the, maybe there was some concern about they were rebuilding. But I couldn't find the documentation on that either. Our records don't go back that far. So it, it's just a conclusion that I draw that it was non-conforming and demolished and rebuilt just at the same time the non-conforming zoning, zoning ordinance was amended.
So to clarify, you think it was non-conforming before two thousand and two, the original, okay.
Oh, yeah.
And then it continued to be non-conforming after the two thousand and two, okay.
I don't, I, it could not be made conforming in two thousand and two because of the lot size and because of the setbacks. And it's still not square on the lot, so I'm assuming they use the same footprint. Maybe they were able to salvage the foundation.
What is the lot coverage allowed in that district?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Okay, I was sitting on this board in two thousand and two. I don't remember anything.
There's no record of a zoning, there are no variants on it.
I have, that's what I'm saying. And I probably won't remember back that far.
Normally, do you need a variance if there's a player?
Oh.
Okay, if it was a pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, they wouldn't, no.
And it's just, maybe it's a coincidence that it was the same time the owner changed, but maybe that was changed to accommodate them rebuilding. I don't know that. And again, it's just speculation.
Yeah.
Well, back in two thousand and two, there was a lot of things done that I'm not going to comment on. So I'm just going to say that um you're looking at everything today, all right? We can't look back to two thousand and two.
No, it's just funny that I couldn't find any variance for it. And then I say, well, did we need one then? And I can't even go back to the ordinance, what the ordinance was before two thousand and two, because I don't have records that far back.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think the lady who also was on the board lived down the street further. Where on the end on the right-hand side was on our board with us at that time along with Bill, and I know Bob was there too. But yeah, there were a lot of little small lots and different things that they did have to make some recommendations to. And so if you can't find them, Cindy, don't ask me because I wouldn't be able to. That's how I feel about it. So let's proceed on. The applicant is here, correct? If you would please state your name and um.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is James Craft. My wife Beth is here and our landscape architect Bruce Stewart is here as well. We've owned the house for seven years and do not know anything about what Cindy just talked about until about a month ago. So we find that interesting. We're in the process of replacing our deck, which was with the house when we bought it. We want to make a couple of improvements or enhancements. And in discussion with Cindy, found out that we're already out of compliance. And so all of these requests would have to go through the zoning commission. So I know there's a great deal of work that Bruce has put in, in these materials. I don't know, Bruce, you want to, if there's any few specific ones you want to hit on? I think the main thing I would say is, I heard a comment previously about this. What we're looking to do is cover our back porch. So right now we have a porch. We're replacing that porch, deck porch. We're looking to put a cover on it. We have no cover. Rain, snow, sleet, ice, doesn't matter at all, piles up there. And then on the, on this picture that you can see on the screen, so it would be the east side of the home, and you can see how it sits on an angle. See the east side of the home. We're looking to build out the northeast corner just slightly, a couple of feet on each side to give us room to get a smaller table in there for, for a picnic or for eating or for sitting. Maybe a table like, we probably couldn't even fit a table like, like this now. We could not fit a table with chairs to sit there. We're trying to build that out a little bit and make ourselves a little bit.
And that drawing is in your supplemental pack?
The other thing that makes this lot unique is we back up to Holiday Hill. So the back, anything on the backside of this lot is, we're in, we're in the dune. So yeah, that's the reason. I, I don't know the background and if it's on the original footprint or not. But you know, this is what we have currently. Do you have, you have any more comments, Bruce?
Yeah, Bruce Stewart, Bruce, I've been working with the crafts and as I stated, they purchased the house with all of the current improvements and are now trying to deal with the situation that exists. You did receive a supplemental package, which gives you a little more information. There's a few more dimensions on it, some photographs, some lay, a layout for the deck and some elevations for the little porch that they'd like to put on. I'm going to start with the porch in the back. It's currently four feet wide and five feet, four inches out from the house. And there's a photograph of it, which is pretty telling. You can find it. It's the west elevation. And we have a blow up of the door there. And you can see how this current, the current porch, there's really no room to stand there and open the door outside of the door swing. Imagine when it's pouring rain or whatever and you're trying to get in the house. So what they would like to do is just move that porch two feet to the right in this photo. It would be south, but two feet to the right and not come any further out from the house than currently exists. So we'll, we'll live with that. Just give us that extra two feet so it's safe to get up on the porch, open the door and, and get into the house. And then in the elevation plans, you'll see we've got a very simple small covered porch. It's about eight feet wide, projects out five feet from the house. We put no new posts down into the ground. We're just using corbels to hold it up. So it's really not having much of an impact on what's currently there. And what we feel we gain by this and by being allowed to build, add that two feet on and this covered porch and the setback is really a safety issue. And something that most people can have a covered porch when they come into their house. The crafts would like to be able to have that same benefit.
I have a comment about that. The building inspector is going to require a three-foot landing when they get their building permit because you can't have a door that swings over steps. It's against the building code.
That's my thought. What, what exists today does not meet the code.
No, it does not.
So what does that mean, Cindy, a three-foot landing?
That means there has to be a landing outside of the door.
So the steps will be.
So the steps will be moved.
Gotcha.
What they're asking for has to be done no matter what.
Well, if they've replaced the steps for any reason because they're deteriorated, the building inspector will require that.
Gotcha.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
It does not meet codes.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have my dimension that I took from that with me, but I believe, oh, here it is, the landing is actually forty-four inches deep. So that's.
That will meet the code.
You said it was forty-four inches?
Deep to the first step.
Okay.
Hope I'm correct, but that's what my measurement says in my notes. The deck that they would like to expand, as you can see, and again, there's the new supplemental information gives you a few more dimensions. As Jamie has already stated, they have a four-foot round table that when they use it, it gets pushed against the railing. Two people sit kind of next to the railing and then two people kind of sit out. And so you can't really even sit all the way around that table. And eight feet sounds like a lot of clear space. But it really doesn't help you much if you want to have six or eight people out dining. And I'm just going to go over here and point, so hopefully you can hear me. The other plan shows this, but there's about an eighteen-inch setback from this corner to this neighbor's lot line. And we tried to keep this at eighteen, nineteen inches as well, so this new corner. So we're not coming any closer. It's not a lot of space, but we're trying to respect that. And then we did go towards the north or Van Dalton Street and asked, are asking for two additional feet so that we can fit a decent-sized table in there. And we're modifying the steps a little bit. There's currently steps, but modifying those slightly. In total, we're only asking for less than a hundred square feet of change to the property and we just feel like it's a, most people should have the right to have a porch or, or deck that they can use. This wasn't a self-imposed circumstance. The house sits awkward on the property already over all of the setbacks. We are built into a sand dune. Again, you'll see that on the other plan. We've got some topography to show how it sits. And we're not really adding much at all for new posts into the ground. We're planning on using these existing structure for the deck. There might be a little bit around the steps, but they could even almost float on the pay, on the ground with the existing posts that are already there. So we're just hoping that because of the strange circumstances of the shape of the, the, or the orientation of the house, the fact that the lot is fifty percent of what's required now in this zoning district. If we were to have built this property out on a standard-sized lot, we would be down around nineteen and a half percent coverage. So, and I, I know that doesn't help, but it's not like they're building something that's massive for the, this zoning district. Any questions? We're here to answer them.
Bruce, you said on that ex, expansion out there, you're not putting any new post in the ground or you can the lever in? Is that what you're doing?
Well, you've got pictures of the deck and the posts, they do show up on there.
Right.
We have currently, there's a post that sits right here that we're hoping to use. But these steps, we might need to sink a post or two here.
Okay, alright.
Otherwise, we're can the lever.
Can the lever.
This way and this.
And that way, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was interesting. Take a look at the house to see how you wanted to do that, that.
Yeah, there's currently a step in the deck too, which just even adds to the.
Let, let somebody fall.
Oh, yeah.
So we are, we are. They are planning on bringing that step up so that you can step out directly
Right.
from your patio door, directly onto the deck without a step. And then there's a layout of a, of a, not an overly generous size, but a, a dining table with, what did we put? Six chairs or eight chairs?
Okay.
And as you can see, we're not trying to put a place for a banquet.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all that. Anybody here on the council have any questions for Bruce or for James or anything?
Any public comments?
Any public comments?
Not seeing any hands raised. I didn't get any communication or any letters or emails.
And the neighbor was noticed, the one who's.
Yep, all the neighbors within three hundred feet were noticed.
I, I know one of the neighbors. Without discussing the case, he came up, he saw me looking at the property and he. Without discussing the case, he came up, he saw me looking at the property and he said, hey, I'm completely in favor of it.
Oh, nice. Well, it's good that it, it's very important to get out to see these things, even though they come up if you. And just, I want to make a comment about that, is that every one that we have, you must get out and see it. No matter what, because there are circumstances that an applicant can say. And if you haven't seen it with your eyes, and I've been there as many times, we've had little heated discussions on what's there and what's not there. So it's very important to, to know that, so good, appreciate that. So now, on that request, then I think we should move into. Our four standards. Mr. Baut, you want to take the first one, please?
Certainly. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the chapter. We may modify the rules or provisions of this chapter. Question one, that strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, bulk density. Would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome? A single-family house with a porch and a deck is a permitted use and that. All of the requested variances are based on the size of the lot. This is a lot that's one-half of the typical size for the city. And that the lot is built in an area of dune and there is a steep slope. To the side and to the back of this house, which further constrains the area where building is possible. The area was planted in eighteen ninety-eight, long before the current zoning. It is a corner lot, so there's no opportunity to get more. More land area to expand the property. There are existing encroachments and. This would present unnecessary hardship as well, so I see that the standard has been met.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Agreed.
Alright, agreed on that? I, I totally do too. Zach, you want to take number two?
That a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give us substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. Well, similar to number one. They, they don't have a lot of room to work with here because of the dune, because of the size of the lot. So two feet seem like a reasonable request. I think that. You could argue that it definitely meets standard two.
Okay.
I would agree.
Agree.
Especially for the door.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Make the building code on that also. Okay, number three.
That the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. There are other lots in the subdivision that have similar issues, but not all of them. So I feel like this standard is met. It's definitely a unique property.
Yeah, and, and I think we always have to refer to the special note that Jim brought up about the size of the lot, the house that was put on it. Not knowing all of the other things that may have occurred here before on zoning regulations. So I, I feel that those should come into that, that comment too, that it does meet the standard on that. Jim, want to take the last one?
Sure, that the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Based on all the conversations, they certainly haven't created this themselves. It is a unique lot, a unique situation, and I think meets the standard.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Any other comments? Alright. Okay, well, I think we have gone through these and I think we, we totally probably, it looks like have agreed on all four of them. So we need a proposal then?
I move we approve the application for variances to the property at one thirty-five Van Dolson Street as submitted and shown on the survey and description.
I second.
The second by Jim, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, the thing, application has been approved and we appreciate your comments and your time. And thank you.
And we appreciate you doing a complete package for us. So you've answered the questions very directly and you've submitted drawings so that we can understand what happens and so that Cindy can review in the future and make sure that everything is. As it should be. Thank you.
Anyone ever asked you, have them call Bruce Stewart?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
That would take the fun out of.
Bruce, we all, we love, we love properties that are looking for variances.
Right, what would we do with that?
What, what are we here for if we don't have that? Thank you very much. So this actually brings our meeting to close on that, on the new business. And so we are now open up to unfinished business. Wow. So election of officers, which we haven't had for a while here now. And Bob is currently the chairman and I have been the vice chair. So if there's any. We have to look for the chairman first on making suggestions for a name.
I move that we nominate Bob Kabasik for chairman for the.
I second it.
He's not here, so.
So Bob Kabasik has been nominated for the chairman and. I don't know if we have to vote, but we have to do a verbal vote at least anyway. All in favor of having Bob as a chair, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, carried. So the vice chair. We need to have nominations for that.
I nominate, take a bond.
I'll second.
I will accept if voted in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, alright, we're back to normal.
Back to normal.
Back to normal. We don't have any public comments? So ZBA comments. Cindy, there's a lot of issues that are out there on, on court cases and everything else. Is there something that you need to bring us up to date on?
The floating homes litigation is still underway in process. The. ZBA appeal, there might be some. Action with that. I know that's still in process as well. What other litigation do we have?
The land swap?
That's all, that's all in the floating homes.
So that's all in the floating home, that's all been brought into one now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm better away from this, so I'm asking these questions that. Alright, and also along with that. The eight-foot wall and all that is all part of the same. But right now, it all just.
It's just hanging there.
Sets there.
Waiting till we get to talk to the man with the black dress.
And just so you all know, if you go to Elegant County Circuit Court, forty-eighth court and our judge. You can watch the case on Zoom. And the next case regarding the ZB, the, regarding the hearing where he is appealing the ZBA ruling. Is this Monday at ten fifteen or ten ten or something like that.
Okay.
And the, the ruling so far is that. They didn't combine the two cases and there wasn't a request to stop this hearing on the appeal of the ZBA ruling. The plaintiff asked that it be withheld until the other case was settled and the judge said, no, these can proceed separately. So we, the hearing on our, on our review of that. Is going to be Monday, that's the next, the next hearing, Monday at about ten ten in the morning.
That's good to know.
You can watch it on YouTube, I think.
Okay. Alright, if you have YouTube to watch it on, okay.
If you have a computer and the internet, you can watch it.
Okay, so I don't have a computer. When I finish the corporate world, I'm done with all that stuff, so I do have a phone key.
My nomination.
Well, let me tell you.
You can watch it on your phone.
Do you have a phone?
I absolutely do, I absolutely.
Does it flip? Does it fold in half?
No, it doesn't. It's not a flipper. So anyway. I, if there's no other comments on the ZBA, I will call ours.
One quick.
Okay.
Cindy, could you add to the memos what? What the variance is that they're looking for, like when it says eight-foot privacy fence, what, what's allowed in the district? I got a couple of these. It didn't say six-foot fence or, or what the setback is, what's allowed. Oh, I know, but I mean, it would be nice just to understand quickly. How out of conformance is that?
Yes. Anything else? No, 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 that, that is good because we do need all this information. As like they came, I tell you this, that last variance, if you didn't have all the information, you would say, doesn't meet number one at all. Boom. Yeah, so those are the things that we, we need, we need all. So I know Cindy, that's always extra work for you, but. We have to be good to everybody that steps in front of us.
Usually it's a notice that goes to the neighbors, but I certainly can put it in the memo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
As it stands right now, do we have a meeting next month?
As it stands right now, we do not have a meeting next month.
Okay.
How long?
I think the deadline is next Friday.
Okay.
Could actually be today because May is kind of a weird month. So I'll double check that, what the deadline is, but.
Okay. Alright, there's no other comments, anybody? Fast for three applications. Well, see Kate, what the, what the vice chair does, just thought I'd let you know.
I've got elected to chair with.
Bob. Bob has more words than me. Is that right, Cindy? She didn't, she didn't make a comment.
You are rarely at a loss for words, Dick. Is that an accurate statement?
You know what, it's so good that when I heard you were becoming a part of this year, I was really happy. Well, just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you.
No, just being in the neighborhood.